Okay. Thank you all for being here. I'm gonna go ahead and call this session of the City of Ocean Shores Hearing Examiner to order. For the record, today is January tenth at ten AM. We have three items on the agenda today, starting with number RU E twenty-three oh seventeen. A request for approval of a reasonable use exception, or RU for short, to allow for the development of an accessory garage slash shop structure associated with a single-family residence, which would impact approximately two thousand one hundred and eighty-two square feet of buffer area associated with a category four wetland located partially on a point three eight acre property at five thirty-four Puffin Avenue. My name is Peregrin Sorter. I'm a hearing examiner with Lamner Law, whom the city has selected to hold certain land use hearings like this one. It will be my role today to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony to determine whether the proposal complies with the city comprehensive plan, zoning ordinances, critical areas ordinances, and the specific criteria for approval of a reasonable use exception. To that end, I received and reviewed several exhibits in advance of this hearing. These include the staff report prepared by city staff, the application and project plans, a wetland report prepared by Agua Tiera Land and Water Services, public comments on the proposal, and various notice materials, and I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Should anyone have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify, and I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Speaking of testimony, all testimony today will be under oath or affirmation because were my decision to be appealed, the recording of today's hearing along with the admitted exhibits and my written decision would serve as the foundation for any such appeal. I may ask questions of those who are testifying. I'm not trying to trip anyone up. I am just trying to ensure that I have a clear understanding of the proposal so that after the record closes, I am able to produce a decision that is hopefully clear and legally defensible. The order that we typically follow, and I believe we will be following today, is first we will hear from city staff who will provide an overview of the proposal along with any recommendations that the city may have. Following that, we will hear from the applicant and see if there is any additional information they feel that myself or members of the public should be aware of in advance of my decision being issued. After that, members of the public will have an opportunity to testify, and finally, following any public testimony, we will turn back to the applicant and the city as necessary for any response. And I think with that, we can get started. Who do we have on behalf of the city here today?
Christina Bro, city planner.
Hello, Ms. Bro. Did my summary of the exhibits track with what you were hoping I'd review in advance of this hearing?
Yes, it did.
Thank you, and let's go ahead and get you sworn in. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony that you give here today?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And can you please spell your name for the audio recording and explain your role at the city?
Christina, C-H-R-I-S-T-I-N-A, B-R-E-A-U-L-T. I'm a city planner underneath Marshall.
Thank you, Ms. Bro. You may proceed with your presentation.
The date submitted was November fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three. The date of this report was done on December twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-three. The applicant is for reasonable use exception authorized impacts to wetland buffer for single-family residency in R-one zone. This is for Joseph and Marine Brock. The Brock Single Family Residency at parcel number zero nine zero five zero 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 two nine two zero zero. It is located at five three four Puffin Avenue Northeast. The lot size is eight thousand four hundred square feet, lot two nine two. The impacts are two thousand one hundred and eighty-two square feet of total proposed impact and three thousand eight hundred and ninety-three square feet on-site mitigation area. Again, the zoning is R-one, single-family, no shoreline, a category four fresh water depression and buffer width of fifty feet. The surrounding conditions, the zoning is R-one, single-family, north, south, east, and west. The land use designation is single-family, north, south, east, and west. Existing land use is single-family residency, north, south, east, and west. The background, the subject property addressed at five thirty-four Puffin Avenue is located in the northeast corner of Ocean Shores, and the closest intersection road is roughly about four hundred and sixteen feet south at Dolphin Avenue. The property is zoned in R-one and located in a single-family zone. The zoning is immediate vicinity exclusive of R-one and impacting a lot for single-family dwellings in the permitted use district. The public hearing notices for reasonable use exception application were scheduled for Wednesday, January tenth at ten AM and were sent to owners three hundred feet of the subject property area on December twenty-ninth as required under Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen point fifty-two point zero nine zero. The hearing information is also available on the city Ocean Shores website. The notice of public hearing was provided to the Daily World newspaper for publication on January second and January fourth. Staff analysis, the staff has determined that the proposed development project is listed as a permitted use. Oh, I did not. Permitted use defined in Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen sixteen point zero two zero A. Wetland buffers exist on this parcel and the surrounding parcels which require an approved application of the reasonable use exception to impact any wetlands in the associated buffer. This project is a super exempt as the single-family residency minor with new construction. No off-site mitigation credits will be needed due to the previously impacted area of the parcel. Restoration of these impacts will serve as an onsite mitigation. The project will restore three thousand eight hundred and ninety-three square feet of impact onsite, avoiding necessary compensatory mitigation. The purpose of the RU is to allow the use of the parcel that would be allowed as a reason as respects otherwise in accordance with the requirements of the applicable development regulations of the city and provide a reasonable measure to avoid minimizing the impacts of any wetland area associated with buffers or applied. The applicant demonstrates that the project has approved underneath the federal and state regulatory programs applicable to this project. Any impacts to the wetland buffers may become compensatory through mitigation measures. Where onsite or offsite mitigation is feasible, compensatory mitigation may be authorized underneath the Ocean Shores Municipal Code of nineteen point oh two point one five zero B. Standard review, the process of obtaining a reasonable use exception shall remain the same underneath seventeen point five two point zero five zero criteria for consideration for considerable use.
Ms. Bro, oh, sorry. I don't I don't think we need to recite the the code section. If if you'd like, you can just kind of move to the the city's recommendation on this matter, and then I think any questions I have will clear things up.
Well, it is our recommendation, should the hearing examiner approve this development, that the planning department recommends conditions as listed. One, construct construction must meet all current planning and zoning building construction and fire code requirements. Two, the craft execute the wetland and buffer mitigation plan that will compensate for impacts to wetland, wetland buffer. This plan shall include delineation fencing and signage that will protect unmitigated area in the critical area during and after construction activities are completed. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Bro. I have some questions for you, but I see the applicant's expert, Mr. Frometh, is here. Maybe we can get him sworn in, so if he has any clarifying response, he's available. Mr. Frometh? You're on mute.
Hello, there we go.
Hello. Did I pronounce your last name correctly? I can't remember from the last hearing.
Um, I don't remember what you just said, but all is forgiven.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and get you sworn in if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you please spell your name for the record and explain your role with this project?
Last, oh, first name Christian, C-H-R-I-S-T-I-A-N, last name Frometh, F is in Frank, R-O-M-U-T-H.
Thank you, Mr. Frometh. If I'm gonna direct my questions to Ms. Bro, but if you want to chime in, please feel free. So, uh.
Oh, the the role, I think you did ask for the role that I provided.
Sorry.
Um, I I am a environmental consultant, wetland specialist with Agua Tiera Land and Water Services. We were hired by the property owners Lorena and Joe Brock to assist with environmental topics related to the proposed building, and and those topics have entirely focused on wetland, wetland compliance with the City of Ocean Shores. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frometh. Ms. Bro, so for the record, the city determined that this proposal is exempt from SEAPER review as minor new construction. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And then it appears from the record that there's a category four wetland that it's located on the eastern edge of this property, and it has a standard fifty-foot protective buffer that covers approximately the eastern half of the property. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then it's my understanding from the wetland report that this existing buffer area is currently degraded from historic clearing and grading activities on the site. Can you or Mr. Frometh briefly speak to the existing conditions of this buffer area on the property?
I can take a stab at that. The 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 history of Ocean Shores involves an enormous amount of grading and dredging and waterway creation and for a planned residential community, which is what we have today. This lot is among them. It's the the lot is the native soils are entirely sand here, and the lot historically was cleared gray, not only for the preliminary plating and preliminary subdivision construction, but for the actual home that's now there. It's a double-sized lot. One, the the northern half of the lot is occupied by a residence. The southern half of the lot is the subject area for the proposed shop building. The entire lot, well, ninety percent of the lot has been converted to basically residential use or residential landscape. The the subject area, the southern half is graded, cleared of native vegetation and covered in lawn, mowed lawn. It's not a recent modification. It's been in place for years. The remaining ten percent of the lot that is not altered for residential purposes is, in fact, wetland, an intact wetland in the eastern fringe of the lot. Yeah, so that's that. Those are the existing conditions there.
Thank you. And then I'm looking at the project plans here, which I have at PDF fifty-six. And it appears that this proposed structure would be located partially within the buffer area, which is currently degraded, as you explained, and that the remaining buffer area to the south and east of the structure would be restored and preserved. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that level of restoration would fully mitigate for this project's impacts?
Yes, they full, it would fully mitigate onsite. There would be no you, no requirement to go offsite and thus spare bank, available bank credits. And this approach is, in fact, specified in City of Ocean Shores Critical Areas Ordinance, and it's referred to as mitigation sequencing, which a an applicant is required to go through the pro- process of first trying to avoid impacts once unavoidable, which they are in this case, they're the entire half of the site is occupied by a buffer. Once any effort to avoid the impacts has been completed, and then there are remaining unavoidable impacts, the mitigation sequencing requires a minimization and then onsite mitigation to the best of the, I guess, from a practicality standpoint. And then if there's anything left over, one can go, is required to go offsite to a to a bank, mitigation bank. They've been able to do everything on, well, the proposal is to do everything onsite, space is available, it's been designated in the different shaded areas on the site plan.
Then, Mr. Frometh, in your analysis, have you determined that this proposed mitigation would result in no net loss of wetland function, maybe even improve wetland functions?
Yes, we have, and in fact, as proposed, and if successful in the mitigation implementation, it would achieve a net gain, not only in wetland habitat, but also in restored, well, to the effect to the mitigated area would actually have an increased hydrologic and water quality value through infiltration and water quality improvement with the the vegetative matter that's there.
Great, thank you. And then the city did receive a couple comments on this proposal from members of the public. First, I believe there was a comment regarding the consultants' wetland forms being out of date. I don't know if you can speak to that, if if that affects your analysis in any way, or.
Right. Thank you. Yes, I'll speak to it. The 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 wetland delineation process involves two general steps. One is the actual field work to identify the location, edge, extent of wetland on property, and that because that is the transit, and from there outward is the buffer, but buffers widths vary based on the the rating of a wetland. The rating is evaluates a wetland for both for habitat quality, hydrologic value, water quality value. That rating process is guided by the a rating system established by Washington State Department Ecology. Ecology under state law is required to update that rating process and 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 accompany forms that are used on a regular basis. The forms used in the subject report reflect the current rating system. Last the last comprehensive update to the rating system was in two thousand fourteen, took effect on January one, two thousand fifteen. The forms utilized here are, in fact, those forms that are posted on the Department Ecology's website. The comment that I had the opportunity to read indicated that there was some change in the forms. That that may, in fact, be correct, that there's some refinement in the formatting of the forms, but not in the content, not in the scoring. Zero, and I emphasize, zero impact on the actual ratings, the the methodology and the scores and the results. And this this wetland turned out to be to expound on this slightly, the wetlands range from very high quality that you might find at a wildlife refuge to very low quality, it could be degraded and for example, an impacted cow pasture that's in a wetland, or a cleared, filled, graded, impacted, urbanized wetland. This one is, in fact, a category four. The City of Ocean Shores has elected to a a scoring system. They utilize the rating system established by the state, but each local jurisdiction, City of Ocean Shores in this case, they get to to choose how large, how wide a buffer is associated with each score. In this case, they've it's treated as a high-intensity impact area because the residential density is greater than one unit per acre, and that affords a category four wetland, the largest buffer in the City of Ocean Shores scoring system for a category four, which is fifty feet. So where I I'm I'm confident that we are current and on spot.
Great, thank you so much. And then there was one other comment. It was regarding the stormwater impacts for, I guess, the eventual construction. Should I approve this? And then the city's lead planner, Mr. Reed, provided a response to that. I guess, Ms. Bro, the only question I have is, are the stormwater impacts of a construction project considered and addressed as a later part of the building permit process, construction permit process?
Yes, they will be.
Okay, thank you. Well, I do not have any additional questions for the city or Mr. Frometh at this time. Are there any other members of city staff that are going to be testifying here today?
No, there's not.
Thank you. And Mr. Frometh, do you have any additional comments that you would like to provide?
I do not, other than that the applicants have been very eager to, you know, comply with all city requirements.
Great, thank you. And it looks like the applicants are on virtual meeting, Lorena and Joe, is that the Brock's?
That's correct. Joe's in house.
Oh, okay. Can we go ahead and get you sworn in?
Sure.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. No, okay, actually. Hello, Mr. Brock. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony that you give here today?
I do.
Okay, now is your opportunity to provide any additional comments on your project that you would like?
I think Christian said it all.
Great, thank you. Then I just have one question for you. Have you reviewed the conditions that were recommended by city staff, and would you have any issues complying with those conditions?
I have, and I do not.
Great, thank you very much. Did Lorena want to provide any testimony today? It's okay if you don't. If you do, go ahead and unmute and chime in. If not, I'll move on. Okay, I don't hear anything. So is there anyone else in the room that would like to testify on this first matter? Anybody else that's logged in virtually? Doesn't appear that any members of the public want to testify, so Ms. Bro, do you have any last thoughts on behalf of the city?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn this first matter. I want to thank everyone for participating today, and I intend to issue my decision on this application within ten business days of the record closing. And for those of you that were here for the first matter, you're welcome to stay, but you also may leave if you wish. And Ms. Bro, are you going to be presenting on the next matter?
Yes, I will.
Great, thank you. You can just go ahead and let me know whenever you're ready.
We're good to go.
All right, well, next on the agenda, we have number RU E twenty-three oh one eight, a request for approval of a reasonable use exception to allow for the development of a single-family residence that would impact approximately three thousand six hundred and ninety-six square feet of buffer area associated with a category two wetland on a point two three acre property located at six twenty Duck Lake Drive Northeast. I received and reviewed several exhibits in advance of the hearing that include the staff report prepared by city staff, the application and project plans, a wetland report prepared by Key Environmental Solutions and various notice materials, and I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Did anyone else have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record? Please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify, and I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. With that, Ms. Bro, you are still sworn in, and you may begin your presentation when you are ready.
The RU was submitted on December eighteenth, and the date of this report was made on December twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-three. The application is for reasonable use exception authorized impacts for wetland buffer to a single-family residency in R-six C ZOM for Elena and Alfredo Fernandez. The parcel number is zero nine one one zero 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 five two zero zero. The division block and lot is five A zero five two. The site access is located twenty Duck Lake Drive Northeast. The lot size is ten thousand two hundred square feet. The impacts are three thousand six hundred and ninety-six square feet of total proposed impact. The zoning is an R-six C, single-family, shoreline no, category two, freshwater tidal fringe, and the buffer width is a hundred and fifty feet. The surrounding conditions, zoning, all surrounding properties are zone six, R-six C, manufactured home, except for the east, which is private recreation. The land use designation, north is single-family mobile home, south, single-family home, east, parks and recreation, west, single-family mobile home. Existing land use, north undeveloped, south undeveloped, east, parks and recreation, and west, single-family residency. Do you want me to go through each one of the code pieces, or should I just go to the recommendation section?
I think if you can just provide a brief summary of you know, the the background, and then you can go right to the recommendations. That's fine.
Okay, the subject property, again, located at six twenty Duck Lake Drive Northeast, is located in northeast corner of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting road is roughly three hundred and sixteen feet feet south of Ozzet Street Northeast. The property zoned R-six C is manufactured homes and double wides. The zoning is immediate vicinity exclusive of R-six B and impacting a lot for single-family dwelling. The public hearing announcement was made on Wednesday, January tenth at ten o'clock. The 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 subject three hundred feet property was done on December twenty-ninth as required under Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty-two oh ninety. And hearing information was submitted of notice public of hearing on January second and fourth. The city's recommendation that construction must meet the current planning and zoning and building construction and fire code requirements and craft execute a wetland buffer mitigation plan that will compensate for the impacts to the wetland buffer. This plan should include delineation fencing and signage that will protect the unmitigated critical area during construction activities beyond their completion, and that completes our report.
Thank you, Ms. Bro, and I do have a couple questions on this one, but I see Ms. McMurray is here, so maybe we can get her sworn in, so she's available. Provide any clarifications? Hello, Ms. McMurray. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And then I'll just throw out these questions, and feel free to chime in. First, it appears from the record that this involves a category three wetland that's located on the eastern edge of the property. Is that incorrect? Category two wetland, thank you. Which has a one hundred and fifty-foot standard buffer that extends over nearly the entire parcel. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. And then, so development of this property with a single-family residence would not be feasible absent a RU allowing for buffer impact?
That is correct.
And then can you speak to the conditions of this existing buffer on the property and how the project would minimize impacts to that buffer?
The existing buffer fully encumbers the, almost it fully encumbers the property except for one little tiny corner, and it is fully vegetated right now where they are going to be building, and so mitigation on this property is hard because it is where they're going to be building. So our avoidance, we avoided as much as possible by building as far back from the buffer and the existing wetland as we could. Well, we can avoid the buffer, but avoiding the wetland is as far back as we can, as far west as we could, and we minimized our footprint and making the house smaller. They chose, they went through several different footprint and house designs, and then we minimized more as far as turning and the location of the house several times. The location of the house several times um and uh. Where they could have moved back farther towards the wetland, we chose not to. Um and and we kept it more in line with the house to the north where they also had had um. Built a fence and went through the re- um reasonable use exception process and they chose to stay in line with the house to the north where they still could have moved. Farther to the east.
Great, thank you. And then because the. Existing buffer on this property is fully intact, mitigation would be achieved. Through payment of credits uh in the city's wetland mitigation bank.
That that is correct. And then um they chose to have a it's not much, but we chose to have an eight foot. Side side yard setbacks and to leave as much natural vegetation as possible on the site.
Great, thank you. And then. Uh the applicant would uh install fencing to protect the uh remaining buffer areas onsite?
Yes, a solid they chose to go with a solid fence um similar to again in line with the um property to the north.
Great, thank you. This is fairly straightforward, so I don't really have any additional questions um. It it does the city have any additional witnesses that would like to present on this matter?
No, we do not.
And Ms. McMurray, do you have any additional comments on this project?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Do we have that? Is the applicant here today?
Yes.
In the room, can we go ahead and get you sworn in?
Yes.
Hi, are you Elena Fernandez?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
And can you please spell your name for the record?
E L E N A F E R N A N D U V.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Uh now would be your opportunity to provide any additional testimony on this project that you'd like me to know?
Um I don't I don't have anything to say other than we are very. Ready to start the project and we will follow all recommendations and everything down to the very rule.
Great, thank you. And you did review those conditions that were recommended by city staff?
Yes, we did.
And and no issue complying with those? Should I approve the project?
No issue.
Thank you so much. Um. Do we have? Any uh additional witnesses in the room that would like to testify on this matter? I don't see anyone. Anyone on Zoom? I don't know if. Mr. Reynolds is with the last matter, I believe.
No, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um with that, Ms. Bro, do you have any last thoughts on behalf of the city before I adjourn this matter?
No, I do not.
Thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn that matter. And I want to thank everyone for participating today. Again, if welcome to stay for the last matter, but you may leave if you wish. And Ms. Bro, just go ahead and let me know when you're ready for the final matter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurray.
We're ready.
Great, thank you. Uh next on the agenda, we have number CUP twenty three oh 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 one. A request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow for a three unit common wall residential structure. On an approximately point two two acre lot. Located at five fifty one Compass Court Northeast to be subdivided to allow for individual unit ownership. I received and reviewed several exhibits in advance of the hearing that include the staff report prepared by city staff. The application and project plans, a comment from a member of the public and various notice materials, and I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Again, should anyone have any additional exhibits that they would like admitted into the record? Just let me know when it's your opportunity to testify. And I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Uh with that, Ms. Bro, you're still sworn in, so you may begin your presentation whenever you are ready.
Okay, the conditional use permit was submitted on December eleventh of two thousand twenty three. The date of this report was made on December twenty eighth of two thousand twenty three. The application is for conditional conditional use permit for an R five multifamily medium density zoned property. For the purpose of the building, three unit share a common wall residential structure and subdivide the. He's requesting to subdivide the property for allow individual ownership. The applicant is T and E Bruce Malcolm. And. It is parcel number zero nine five one zero one two zero three nine zero zero. Division twenty four block twelve lot zero three nine is located at five fifty one Compass Court Northeast. The three lots are subdivided into one at three thousand eight hundred and forty seven square feet, lot two at two thousand seven hundred thirty five square feet. And lot three at three thousand one hundred and thirty four square feet. Existing condition, the zoning is an R five five plex and six plex area. The land use is multifamily medium density. The surrounding conditions, north is five. R five five plex and six plex, south by R five five plex and six plex. East R five five plex and six plex. And west are one single family. The land use designations. North, southeast are multifamily medium density and west is single family. Existing land use, north is multifamily medium density. The south is vacant and undeveloped, the east is vacant and undeveloped, and the east is a single family unit. The background, the property is located in the northeast corner of Ocean Shores in a multi-use division surrounded by a mixture of residential, single family occupancy uses. Multifamily uses and public recreational and undeveloped lots. There are several other multifamily structures and single family residential structures in the median area. The purpose of this conditional use request is for the development of a common wall residential structure. Where underlying land is subdivided to allow individual ownership of the subdivided lots. This is a pursuit of pursuant of Ocean Shores Municipal Code Title seventeen. Chapter seventeen point twenty four point zero three zero C. Notice, public hearing notice went out on January tenth. For January tenth to three hundred feet subject properties on December twenty ninth as required under the municipal code seventeen fifty two oh ninety. The hearing information of this of city webs is located on the city website. And was published in the Daily World newspaper on January second and January fourth. Do you just want me to go to recommendations again?
Sure, that would be great, Ms. Bro.
Should the hearing examiner approve this conditional use permit, the planning department recommends the conditions listed and any other conditions. This one has a lot. Okay, construction must meet all current building construction fire code requirements. Number two, adequate parking shall provide as Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty four oh sixty. Three, an approved storm drainage design shall be provided prior to the permits being issued. Four, landscaping as per Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty one hundred shown on this plan. And number five, each newly created parcel through the subdivision will be required to establish an individual municipal utility. That covers sewer, water, storm drain, and ambulance. The subject partial parcel that is subdivided shall be given credit for two sewer utility assessments. Each new parcel created pursuant pursuant to this approval. Of this request shall be required to comply with the system development charges for each parcel based on the requirement. Of thirteen point twenty six point oh six five. Similar conditions shall apply to establish water services as required to complete the project. Underneath Ocean Shores Municipal Code Title thirteen point twelve point oh eighty. And Title thirteen point twelve oh eight five. The storm drain utility fees underneath thirteen twenty oh five zero. And the ambulance utility fees underneath two point thirty three point oh nine oh C three. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Ms. Bro. Um. So I guess the first question I have is, has this three unit uh residential structure already been constructed on the lot?
Yes, it has.
And um it's my understanding that the the structure itself is allowed outright in this underlying R five. Five plex and six plex zone, is that correct?
Correct.
And so the this conditional use permit. Uh it request is just to facilitate the individual ownership of the units and lots.
Correct.
Thank you. Um so for instance, uh. If there was no conditional use permit issued for this, these units could be rented to tenants. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And then as part of the um prior permit approval for this building. Did the city review? The emergency access to the units?
Yes, we did.
So there's no no concern with that. And then it appears that there would be adequate access both. To the front and rear of the property um some Dolphin Avenue, so.
Yes. One thing to add that you um there's a stop sign added to Dolphin Avenue on the backside of the units and. He would have to go through a rezone application to access the property from the the backside of it now. From what I was told, Mr. Malcolm, um T and E. Had suggested easements from the front side for the other two units that are in the center. But I don't know the details yet of how that's been worked out.
Okay, and that's not an issue. That's before me on the the use anyway. Great, thank you. And then uh there was one comment regarding the project number for this application. Is it? Correctly designated as CUP twenty three and I have five zeros and one. Is that the correct project number? There was a comment from uh Ms. Pierre. Saying that it should be.
We've um started a new portal system and I believe that's the numbering system they're starting now.
Okay, and it would be twenty three zero 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 one. At twenty four, the application was received probably in twenty three. Okay. Yes, I see that. Um well, that's I I really don't have a lot of questions about this one. These type of CUPs in the city are pretty straightforward. Uh does the city have any additional witnesses it would like that they would like to present today?
No, that concludes.
Okay, do we have someone here on behalf of the applicant? Is there anyone in the room representing the applicant in this matter?
It doesn't look like it.
Okay. I generally like to have someone on the applicant team here because it's their burden to uh. Show that they meet all the criteria, but this is very straightforward. There's not really. Any issues that I see. Are there any members of the public in the room that would like to testify today? Doesn't appear so. And then unless Mr. Frometh wants to chime in on this last matter, I don't see anybody on Zoom. So with that, I guess I'll just turn back to you uh Ms. Bro, if you have any last thoughts on behalf of the city?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And you know, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this hearing. I want to thank everyone again for participating today. And I intend to issue my decision on this application within ten business days of the record closing. I hope everyone enjoys their day and. We'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.